Session. V-DOT six-year plan. Call the work session to order. And the first item involves discussion of the six-year plan with V-DOT. Welcome. Gentlemen, it's all yours.
Good afternoon Chairman White and Board. I'm Jonathan Rumbow with the Virginia Department of Transportation. For the fiscal year of 2025, your county was allocated $3,350. Nine, ninety-seven, four hundred and fifty-nine of those dollars are telefee funds which can be used for rural rustics, for rural additions, and any other secondary road improvements that you guys would like to implement. Two-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and fourteen are for unpaved route funds, which can only be used for rural rustic funds. We have come up with three recommendations. The one the department favors is distributing those funds across the existing projects in your secondary six-year plan. Those projects have been updated based off of 2017 and 2018 actual numbers, so they're no longer estimates. They're based on actual numbers that we have. Any funds that are not allocate that, so that about a hundred thousand of those are not going to be used for the redistributing. Any of those you could use for a rural rustic project of your choice.
What about rural addition? Are you, any of tho- any of those monies available for rural addition?
Yes, so the two-hundred-and-thirty-seven of the, are the unpaved that we're using to redistribute. So your telefee funds are all still there.
And those can be rural addition?
Yes, sir.
Because there's a couple of projects that are sitting on our auxiliary list at the moment that, and in one case, I, I think that it's, it's a, it's a mile of road, but there are like thirty or thirty-five homes on that road. And, you know, that's, that's one that all of a sudden keeps bubbling up in priority because it's a lot of traffic. And it's, right now, it's a private road that is a problem. And we have, you know, this is not a unique situation. We have plenty of those. But that's one of the ones that's been identified. And you guys have done some engineering work on that. I'm talking about Harbor Drive primarily. We'll get that. Okay, I just want to make sure that they're, because some, I, I know somewhere I read in your report that you're not recommending adding anything to the six-year plan at this point.
That's our recommendation, yes.
And I, you know, I don't know if, if, if that means we need to, you know, look at all of the priorities or, or what it actually entails, but especially on the, the rural addition piece, that's, that's one that is, we, seems to me we need to be more aggressive about chipping away at that problem. As you probably know, we've taken some steps within our ordinance system to try to not make the problem get worse over time in terms of these, maintaining these private roads, but, but we still have the legacy situation sitting there where there are a lot of miles of private roads that are, that are problems. And then the only solution, I think, is to, you know, get them in, in your system ultimately. So there's a lot of interest in, you know. I, I think the expectations are reasonably well-controlled. No one thinks this problem is going to be solved, you know, in one year's time. But I, I think that we need to keep, keep that priority in mind. And, and maybe it includes potentially reevaluating some, some things in the six-year plan and seeing if particularly the rural addition money can be, we can get more bang for our buck in terms of managing the, the number of trips per day and those kind of things with some of the other projects. I, I don't have a substitution in mind to say, take this one out and put that one in, especially since I think very few of them are in my district, so I couldn't, I'd have to be negotiating with my, my buddies on the, and I call them my buddies up here.
Depends on what you want to take away.
Therein lies the rub.
Well, if it, if it does help in that decision, since these are FY25 funds, the allocations that we're current discussing are the six-year funds from now.
Right.
So.
And that's one of the reasons for bringing it up, that, you know, even if we made an adjustment or moved some things around, it, it's a, it's not a next year or the year after that kind of a project. It's, it's, you know, many years.
Once we identify the cost estimate, we could provide that to you. If the board wanted to introduce that project into the plan and allocate a portion of your telefee funds that you're allocated in FY25 to that project to include it in the plan, it will then be identified and accrued future telefee funds as the board, these are your monies, identifies in the next secondary six-year plan and the following secondary six-year plan. You can allocate those accordingly in future years.
Well, some of these you, you have, the, the engineering work that was done has, has broken it into segments. I mean, there's one piece, I think it's only a tenth of a mile, for example, i- i- is the segment. So there's, I guess there's a possibility of, you know, making an allocation at least in, to get started in some of those areas. So.
There is. And if there's any specific private street that we haven't responded to, we can jump on that very quickly and do a traffic count, make sure that it's eligible, give you a cost estimate with a, with a quick review before we return and give you time to assess that before we.
Well, the ones that, I'm, I'm trying to get ahead to the, are, I think they're all on the auxiliary list at this point. The, the, the ones that were identified, we have bad internet service. Here we go.
It seems to be worse than bad.
On the, on the auxiliary list, there are, there are four rural addition potentials. You know, a, a three-tenths of a mile segment of Independence, which I, which I think you've already done the engineering for, Oak Springs Road, and then two segments of Harbor. I think all four of those, the engineering work has been done. At least the preliminary work.
We did a, enough of a review to generate an order of magnitude cost estimate.
Right, right.
We would still need to go back and do a detailed review to make sure if it's encumbered by utilities, a right-of-way that needs to be dedicated to public use, of those steps that would need to occur. Environmental clearances, stormwater management, those things.
Well, I couldn't tell from the, the, now we've got to go all the way back to this, to the list of all the secondary roads. There was a designation of whether the, the road is paved or unpaved, but I didn't find anything that told me whether or not it was, I'm assuming since all these have numbers, that none of these are private roads. None of these, none of these are rural addition candidates. So I'm, what I, what I thought I understood was that, at the moment, other than the auxiliary list, we, we do not have any rural addition candidates pending. Is that an accurate statement?
Yes, sir. We've had several that are in your six-year plan.
Yeah, I, I had the same reaction to him. I, I.
Enchanted Way is Enchanted Way in the six-year plan.
Yeah.
Mountain View Court is in the plan. Westwind Drive is in the plan. Those are in the secondary six-year plan now.
But they have, they already have numbers, they already have state route numbers.
But that's our established list is the formal secondary six-year plan. We don't have an alternate list of private streets outside of what's in the plan.
We just talked about the, the private streets to see if we can do something.
Right, so your ability to add projects to the list is during the public hearing process once a year. So in between, you can add them to the auxiliary list. We haven't taken action since last year to add any of them to the auxiliary list, but Jonathan and Alan have been providing kind of the review where they go out there and look at the road and get that general order of magnitude.
So this fall would be when we would officially request to add them to the list.
Well, you would be tonight initiating your public hearing process.
Help me understand something. The, what do you call them, the telefee funds?
Yes, sir.
Well, based on Allison's memo, it sounds like those funds could be used for either the rural rustic or rural addition. Is that correct?
They, they can be. Your telefee funds can be used for anything in the secondary system. We're, we're using telefee funds for the, the widening and overlay of Battlefield Farms. Those three route segments between the nursery and 522. The project in your secondary six-year plan for overlay, those route segments are also telefee funds. We can use those for just about anything in the secondary system. Any improvements, rural addition, improvements to a private street, rural rustic, improvements to a non-hard surface road, or like Battlefield Farms, improvements to a hard-surfaced road in the secondary system. And there, there were other two route segments that we just provided estimates and a preliminary inspection review on, Germana Drive and Fieldstone. We, we unfortunately, we just got those to Allison. So those we've provided. We've got two that we're looking at.
And that really just gets the cost estimate, a very rough cost estimate. But as Alan mentioned, it doesn't, it's not the deciding factor. If the easement or right of, I'm sorry, if the right-of-way has been dedicated to public use or if there are any utilities located within that right-of-way, those aspects are not included as part of the initial kind of higher level review.
Right.
So we have gotten some of them throughout the years since your last secondary six-year plan public hearing and since the last time you adopted the auxiliary list.
I, I guess the question, one of the questions before us is, do we, do we take any steps to try to identify part of those telefee funds, which are less than a hundred, a hundred thousand dollars in this, in this case, and, and move some of that money to, you know, rural addition projects? Because it, it's clear there are enough other secondary road improvements and rural rustic and other things to absorb that amount of money many, many times over. And, and maybe the, the amount is small enough that it, it's, it's not going to make a big difference. I mean, there's, you know, a much larger amount of money for paving, unpaved roads than there is for the telefee funds, so.
One of the exercises that Jonathan has been going through is he went across all of the projects in the secondary six-year plan. Based on the actual cost for the projects that we've been working on in the county, not just Marquee Road, we use some of those cost estimates for Battlefield.
Right.
But looking at Catharvin and then looking at 608, and the combination of using contractors and our own state forces and what those actual costs were, he went through and updated cost estimates on every route segment that's currently in the plan in the draft that we proposed. So that's just redistributing the 2025 allocations across the existing projects. But you've also got monies in your secondary six-year plan now that are held in what we call a balance entry account, and that's in the back of your plan. And there's four hundred thousand dollars there. The breakdown between telefee, it's primarily, there's telefee monies in those as well. So we could take monies out of your balance entry accounts that are at the end of your secondary six-year plan on the last page. And if you wanted to introduce a, a new rural addition project, we would add it. It would be future dollars, twenty-two-five dollars. And you could identify the amount within the allocation that we've got and add one. But it is a, I, I understand that it's a hard decision, identifying.
Well, and, and there's no question that the, the, the secondary road improvements and, and the paving and the rural rustic, you know, there, there's plenty of work to be done there. Really, I guess the, the, the policy question in my mind is, do we, do we start the process, at least in a small way, of trying to address this, this rural addition question? Because we really have made very little progress on that type of, of a road. In at least the last eight years, we haven't done anything that I'm aware of. Maybe there has been one here and there, but not, not as a rural addition at least. And.
Well, we have three in the plan right now that were added last year.
In the auxiliary?
Three on the, funded on the secondary six-year plan. The first is Westwind Drive. That's a rural addition project.
What's that road number? Can you remember?
Well, I don't know that it has a road number.
It has one now.
It has one now. It did not previously because a rural addition, if you'll recall, is a private road. And then once, I guess a UPC is assigned to it and you start the work, V-DOT assigns it a route number. So last year, we added Westwind Drive, Mountain View Court, and Enchanted Way from, you know, discussions throughout the year. Those are all three rural addition projects. I don't know the completion status of all of them yet. I know Westwind was underway, right? So there is a potential that once all of the funding for those projects are in place and the projects are completed, if there's savings, those would be telefee funds to, to roll over to another rural addition project. But any rural addition projects that we added during this year's public hearing process would fall in line behind those three that are already on the plan.
Westwind Drive is completely funded. So we are, as weather permitting, we're going to pick that back up and finish that project this year. Mountain View Courts, the remaining funds for Mountain View Court come online this year.
Do I want?
Right. And then we'll hard-surface that. There are a couple of elements on Mountain View Court that we're not going to approve at this time. We're going to go ahead and give it a route number and begin to maintain it and hard-surface it and clean it up. It has a deep culvert that's failed, and that will, the cost estimate that we have in the plan for that project is ninety-five thousand dollars. It would probably cost us sixty-five to seventy-five just to replace the culvert. So for the time being, we're going to let it drain, improve the top, and put another plan together once we've brought it into the system to replace that culvert with future maintenance dollars that we've got.
And if I can interject just for a second, for Mountain View Court, that is part of the Rapid Inn Hills subdivision. The county does have a bond that's in a CD right now that will mature in June. Because this is the last segment of that subdivision that we can pull the funds for. I've been talking to Daryl Shiflett, who wasn't able to be here this evening, about pulling the funds out of that CD while we're able to, when it matures this summer, and then entering into a project, sort of project administration agreement to turn those funds over to V-DOT to be used. And even though it's only about ten thousand dollars in, in a ninety-five thousand dollar project, those ten thousand dollars will come from the bond and will be savings to that project that can be applied to an additional or, you know, future years for a, a rural addition project.
Is that Route 1120? Is that the one that you, you assigned that, that number to? It's called Mountain View Drive on the list, but I don't know if that's the same as Mountain View Court. Anybody know?
Mountain View Court.
Oh, no, it's 1053. There it is. I see it now. Okay.
That's a two from. So it's 1053 and it's from.
Right. Okay.
So part of Mountain View, part of Mountain View Court is already in the state system.
The western.
Right, and this is an extension that'll take the rest of Mountain View Court and the cul-de-sac, I believe, in, into the state system.
And back to your question, when, when I've been asked that question before as far as having a private street versus a street that's in the system. Selfishly, we're spending maintenance dollars on public roads to improve them with drainage and stone throughout the year. And last year was a banner year for that. Some of those roads have fifty to sixty vehicles per day. One of the private street segments that you're talking about with thirty homes, based on our trip generation manual, we have ten trips for residents, so that's three hundred. So if you're going to engage, if, if you're looking at return on investment in our mission of keeping people moving, then having a private street that has three hundred vehicles per day on it has a high return on investment. So even though I would selfishly want to make an improvement to a street that we're already maintaining with maintenance dollars, when you look on that return on investment of keeping Virginia moving, then improving a private street that has thirty homes on it is certainly something that I would consider versus some of the smaller routes that are in the system that have a low vehicle per day.
And I guess the question is, when do we have that conversation? I mean, we're, we're having part of it tonight, obviously, but.
I'd give nothing more to have an answer to that. Because I, I send a lot of transportation concerns to Jonathan and Alan. And it, it's not that we didn't put a lot of thought in that direction this year when we were presenting the plan. But we felt, given the number of rural rustic projects that are already in the plan, and then the three rural additions, that was a good split, you know, to represent projects in the county. And taking this year to do more homework, we wouldn't really lose anything with it being 2025 funding that, that we would be applying to any future projects. So we definitely did think about it. I know collectively, we don't have a solution to it, but we'd love to chip away at that, those projects that people call about as well.
Well, while we're talking about improvements, I had the people that live on Bushy Mountain ask me to do, to see if I could add something into the project, at least if nothing else but for that hill that they have to keep maintaining themselves. Y'all just can't get there often enough. And Lord God, since all they did was rain the last two years, all they did was run their equipment up and down the road to keep gravel on it. So if we could do something with getting that on a list somewhere or another, I would be very pleased.
Is, is there anything on that road on the list now that we, that we're aware of?
Is Bushy Mountain a secondary road?
It is.
Okay, so it would be maintenance.
Six-twenty-six.
Right, six-twenty-six.
Funny, if you come down and connect to that road, you're going to repay it.
Yes, sir. You're right. And this time last year, when we were talking about secondary six-year plans, that was one of the route segments that we were proposing as an addition. If you were going to include a route that's already in the system, six-twenty-six, that other end, several of those would be good recommendations too.
Yeah, because part of it's already paved.
Right.
It was brought to my attention that everybody thought the rest of it was getting, getting paved, but that was never included because I had Allison go back.
Yeah, is that, is that the, it has a metal plate in the road? Is, is that the one that we were talking about? I know Bushy Mountain, we sent, we've had V-DOT look at it this year, or at least this fiscal year, last calendar year.
And some of it, based on the geometry of that route and the current condition, it would be very difficult to widen it further. The goals of the rural rustic funds are minor widening, drainage improvements within the footprint of the prescriptive easement that's provided and hard-surfacing.
Yeah.
If I had the funds with Bushy Mountain, what I would like to do outside of the six-year plan is chip seal it with three or four lifts within the footprint that we've got. Not necessarily add it into your plan, but identify outside of your plan a way for us to improve that with maintenance dollars that we have at the residence.
Biggest thing I got is that they wanted it paved and so it wasn't falling apart.
If we have enough funds, instead of introducing that as a route, that, that was one that we recommended, but also looking at it too, it would take a lot of work. It's going to be an expensive project. To get it to the goals of eighteen-foot width ditches and opening the banks up, clearing the overhead to get that to the point where it would be a good rural rustic project and meet the intent of the rural rustic route program. It would be better to keep it out of the plan and just us get in there and try to figure out a way to hard-surface it. At least that segment that's difficult to maintain.
Yeah. That's all they want is some, some hard surfacing.
Alan, what's, what's the schedule on, on Westwind? You mentioned it earlier, but when are we going to get started on that, you know?
This, I giggle because every, every schedule I've given you, we've broken. This spring, it is, is this spring, we are not going to begin another project west of 522 with state forces until Westwind Drive is complete.
That's as good as it gets.
And I, I apologize.
What about East of 520?
It's bad for me to do that, doing everything.
Just quiet, quiet. Just leave, leave that alone.
Our Gordonville area headquarters, that is their focus.
Okay.
The Rhodesville area headquarters, their focus is completing the route segments of 603. And then if we can, at least begin replacing the culverts on 602 this year and moving forward in the plan.
Well, you mentioned culverts earlier. I know this is a bit off the subject, but I do have a question for you. What, what, how does V-DOT handle culverts where streams have sort of shifted and aren't? There's a double culvert under a road in my district. And it's, the creek bed has kind of shifted due to flooding and that sort of thing, so that's, all the water pretty much goes through one culvert now. And what it's doing when we have a, a big gully washer is it's actually starting to, you know, wash some of the, some of the, whatever's under the road, whatever you want to call that. You understand what I'm saying?
I do.
Because I really don't understand myself, but.
Well, if you give us a route segment, we'll take care of it.
Well, it's 657. It's Albana Road. It's, it's, it's at the, the base of the, of the, of the hill. You come off a ridge road, 644, down to the bottom of the hill. And there may be a little bit of water flowing through it right now, but it, there have been times when there was no water at all going through the eastern culvert. These are large culverts. I mean, these are, you know, you can walk through them.
Yeah, we'll have to see. Anything that has a hydraulic opening greater than thirty-six square feet is a structure that falls under our structure and bridge section. And it's a different flavor of money for their improvements, but if there's an issue there, it's something that we can continue to coordinate with them. If it's less than that, then we would go in with our own maintenance funds and try to improve it. It would have to get in line.
But I mean, the, the, the culverts are fine. It's that the creek bed has shifted. So I, my question really went to, do you all, I mean, I, I, I'm not aware of you all having a dredger, so I'm just wondering what you do in this situation.
No, if, if it has, if, depending on the type of stream, ephemeral, intermittent, or perennial. Perennial is full-flowing. The other end, the ephemeral, is just when it rains and runoff.
Oh, no, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a full-time stream.
So if it, it's a perennial stream,
Yeah.
then our environmental section would need to review that. And any types of improvements we would need would be heavily permitted.
Twenty years.
That's what, that's what we do, but it would be heavily permitted.
Heavily permitted.
Long time.
So if a big storm comes along and washes out the road, would that speed up the heavily permitted part?
Yes, sir.
Glad, I'm glad there's a, there's a failsafe there.
There is, in, in an emergency.
It would seem to me that you're not rerouting the stream. You're just putting it back to where it used to be. They never stay put, though. They always move. It's amazing.
But we will, we'll look at that and get our.
So landowners, though, could go down with shovels and, and work on it.
At night, outside of V-DOT's right-of-way.
Yeah. Yeah, that's the other problem.
You, yeah, you don't really have any right-of-way.
Right. It's prescriptive easement, so it's their problem.
Okay. Any other questions or input to, or good ideas? We're always looking for good ideas.
What we're asking for ultimately is your consideration to schedule the public hearing for the secondary six-year plan at seven o'clock on our Tuesday, May fourteenth meeting, which will allow us time, if you wanted to defer something, but to ultimately have the plan adopted by the end of May. And if you are okay with what staff and V-DOT have proposed this evening, the draft plan would not include an addition of any rural addition or rural rustic projects. Would rather, it would be a repeat of what was in last year's plan with the reallocation of this year's funds and the update of project estimates. Is that accurate?
Yes, ma'am.
Tell me one more time about the four hundred thousand dollar monies that are, that are sitting there. What, what are the constraints around that pot of money?
Those are what we call balance entry accounts.
Right.
Whenever we get a request for a traffic engineering element, we can tap that source. And if we get a request for a speed study, we use those funds. If we have a project that we advertise in the estimate. If we have a project that we advertise and the estimates come in high, we can tap those funds to, to help pay for those. So, it really is a contingency that we can use for anything. We also have our county safety and operational improvement funds outside of the secondary six-year plan that we can use for anything, either primary or secondary.
That four hundred thousand wouldn't normally be used for an additional project, for additional road. It can be?
Those monies are in your secondary six-year plan, you can allocate them as you see fit.
I, I guess that's the thing. For some reason, I can't. The math's not working for me.
Well, I mean, if you, if you had it, so you could, could, i- is there any fiscal year constraints on the use of that?
Yes, sir, there sure is. In, in your secondary six-year plan, a, a portion of those funds are future funds in fiscal years twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four. So, a portion of that four hundred and some thousand dollars are future funds.
Okay, but some of it that's in current or past, we could actually use on a, on another project that we might wanna add to the six-year plan?
Yes, sir. I would have to go back, and I apologize that I don't have it this evening, the breakdown of the flavor of that funding, telefee versus your unpaid grant fund. And to see, and we also had some projects within Orange County, Marquee Road, Catharpen, that had different flavors of funding outside of the telefee and the unpaid grant funds, that we would need to see what that breakdown is, but if you're, that's something that we can send you pretty quickly.
I was gonna say, is that something that you could, you give us a little bit of an analysis of and maybe send Allison that she could distribute it to us? Cause it, before we, I mean, I think it's probably okay to schedule the public hearing, but before we start making decisions, I, I think we should understand what, what, if any, flexibility we have with, with those funds. I, I don't pretend to understand it right at this moment, that's.
Well, the, the idea is if, if there's some funds out there that have been uh, uh, we didn't need for projects we've already completed, that if there's something, we, if there are projects that we would like to move up or that uh, uh, add, you know, even if you've got a, a twenty twenty-three, uh, twenty-two, twenty-three funds, there was something we wanted to add in that timeframe, if there were funds available. But at the same time, we don't wanna necessarily zero it out if we've got speed studies and other things we need to do.
That's our contingency fund.
And it looks like there's only about a hundred and fifty thousand really truly available right now and it's not in out years.
Right, okay.
The bulk of it is all out years.
In the out years.
Right, yeah.
Well, a hundred and fifty, it's a good share. That's the price of some of these projects here.
It's a year's worth of telefee funds.
What's the average cost to do a speed study, do you know? Ballpark?
Three thousand.
How much?
Three thousand.
About three thousand.
I've had a number of requests that after reviewing all this and with it being three thousand dollars, there's some, it seems to me like we're wasting money, quite honestly, on some of these speed studies. Uh, I know one that I've brought up at our last meeting. My section of the road had been done a couple of years ago, Teal's was just done last year. Is there some policy or something that we could share with constituents regarding?
Or what is the.
When a speed study is really worthwhile and when it's just a, a waste.
A drill in a.
Futile, yeah.
As a practice, we do not repeat a speed study in one location outside of extenuating circumstances such as an additional development or other change within a thirty-six month period.
Okay.
And based on a very, Jonathan and I can look at with a quick assessment. We can't look at the speeds, but we can look at the crash history and see if there's sufficient crash history over the last three years within that period that might sway the speed limit one way or the other. Our district traffic engineer is gonna look at the average speed of the eighty-fifth percentile of traffic. And if that, if, if you know, based on your observations, that traffic is either traveling at or above the posted speed limit, then that is not going to be a factor. He's gonna look at that, and if it's a fifty-five miles an hour and the average speed is seventy-two, then if they can safely travel at that speed, then we're not going to lower it.
You, you, you gave me the answer, the three years, because I've, I've had two different constituents recently call on speed studies redone on roads that we've, we've literally just done, and that gives me a good guide to use.
Say no.
Right, exactly.
And when I forward them to you, you would respond accordingly.
Yes, we should.
Right, okay, well, good, that's.
Actually, it'd be good to do it before we get a resolution or something like that.
Let us give it a first look first and then say.
Yeah, okay.
Whether we've done it thirty-six months, what the speeds look like, and if crash history has changed in such a way that it's.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else for Alan or John?
Are we gonna make the motion to do this thing or move to hold the public hearing?
To schedule, yeah. Did you have a date for, yeah, May fourteenth, okay. Have a motion, is there a second? Have a second, any further discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Uh, since I missed that phone call, uh, you putting the center rumble strips down to Rapidan anytime soon?
We wanted to ask the board if that's what the board wants to do. If, if that's your recommendation, it's our from an engineering study perspective, Route sixteen Rapidan Road is a good candidate for centerline rumble strips. It, there's a cost with that. It, for residents that live along that route, they're gonna hear every time a life is saved, when someone crosses over that centerline, they're gonna hear it.
I think we ought to do it.
Do they come in different sizes?
They come in different sizes, yes, sir, they do. The rumble strips that we used on six oh-one, they're more expensive, but they're sinusoidal and they're quiet. You feel them in the steering wheel, but they cost about four times as much. Because the grinder is in constant contact and it's programmed based on speed, and I, I find it really fascinating, but it's more expensive.
No, well, I know, I mean, that's what they had asked for, they wanted the center strip and.
Yes, sir.
What did, what did you say that the improvement in, in fatal hit on crashes was?
Sixty percent.
Sixty percent.
Crossovers, and we've heard concerns about those clamoring to the ditch to get out of the way, and all of those run off-road, whether it's to the right or across the centerline, are run off-road as either. It, it's a reduction of at least sixty percent, and somewhere else, it's been substantially higher than what we've seen in some of the other counties. It's really impressive.
Would you, would you do the whole road, or is there a criterion that you would use to do just a segment of it? Uh, what, 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 how would you approach, let's say, that road specifically?
Given, I would do it within the forty-five mile an hour speed limit section, to get past the residential area.
Right, okay.
And then start there, and if we.
So, forty-five miles an hour above?
Yes, sir, and then all the way to the town limits. We would do that same, on, over on the east side.
I mean, that's, that's one of those things they asked me for, told me I'd do what I could do.
We'll take care of it.
I just wasn't gonna stop.
We'll get it on the list, we're preparing that list of our priority routes right now, and our contractor's getting started again. And so Jonathan's working on that, we can use our county safety and operational improvement funds for it and give you a cost estimate to let you know how much it's gonna cost and go ahead and get that task order scheduled.
Okay.
I have the email from Alan, and I'll send the board's consent on his request in writing.
Al- also, Alan, the, the cross-lane rumble strips on thirty-three approaching Barbersville, on twenty approaching thirty-three in Barbersville. I talked to you about it before, and there's like some, I'm not real sure, cause I thought they repaved there, but there's like some partial ones there, but they're not really total, they're not complete.
Yes, we, we need to remark them. We did remark them after we resurfaced, but we, if they're not put down hot enough and they don't adhere to the pavement, then we'll plow them right up.
Okay, well, yeah, maybe that's what happened, yeah, okay.
We may have just pushed them right out of the way, and we'll put them back.
One time, Alan, you said the number of, the reduction in, in collisions as a result of putting them on the stoplights or on the, in the intersections, what was that number? It was a huge number in terms of reduction in crashes from the rumble strips as you approach a stop sign. You told me it was like eighty or ninety percent, something like that. Remember the big numbers.
They get your attention, they.
They, they really do get your attention, I don't have that exact number with me in my head. We've been focused so much on the centerline rumble strips and the, but. We'd prefer to grind them into the pavement, because then we don't push them off. But those two, they do generate a lot of noise, and we're always sensitive as to where we put them.
Yeah, I, I prefer grinding them into the pavement as well, because the, the, the tape strips will start to fall apart fairly soon.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Don't go away, you're, you're up again here fairly quickly.
We'll take some notes.
That's right. Okay. We'll close the work session and.
It'll be closed.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Call the meeting to order, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A couple of changes that I'm aware of on the agenda. We're gonna delete item three C. Mr. Rose apparently is in, returning from Minneapolis for an excellent reason. Also, uh, we're gonna remove five C, the FMLA policy. There's, it's still being worked on, not quite ready for us yet, but we're adding a, a new item. Uh, the school refunding of the BPSA bonds, which you have notification of. And that's all the ones I have, any other changes or additions or questions about the agenda?
I have none, Mr. Rose.
Move to approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we have an agenda. Special presentations and appearances, service of words, Mr. David.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, as Mr. White, yes, we do have one, one employee to recognize. As Mr. White makes his way down, it's my pleasure to recognize Andrew Hackey as receiving his five-year service award. He's in our information technology department, he's a technician.
Come on up, Andrew. Five years.
I don't know how we do without him in there fixing our computers and everything else.
He's well-known by a lot of folks. Yes, next is a certificate of appreciation.
Okay, all right.
Carolyn's here, if I could ask Carolyn.
Yes, come on up, Carolyn. I'm gonna read this. This is a certificate of appreciation from the county of Orange presented to Carolyn Glenn and wishes to express its sincere thanks and gratitude for your twenty-one years of dedicated service. Your wisdom and commitment to excellence have long inspired all of us and will be remembered for many years to come. We wish you good health, happiness, and continued success in your retirement. Signed, April ninth, J. K. White. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Carolyn has served for, for a long time as the county's victim witness coordinator.
Yes, sir, if I could have just a couple of minutes, I would, would like to um, tell all of you that I'm very proud to have served since this county. Sorry?
It's all right, it's hard to leave.
And I am just as proud as I can be that you have seen fit, Orion, to take up that position. I see in her, me, twenty years ago, and she is gonna serve this county well. So, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, introduction of Sarah Keeler, finance manager.
Yes, sir.
Glenda's not here, I know, but.
Yeah, I'm gonna invite Sarah up here.
Okay.
Glenda's ill today and not able, I'd like to introduce Sarah Keeler. Um, she's our new finance manager who is going to bring some relief to, to Glenda. Um, and Sarah comes to us from the community services board, so.
Hello.
Fantastic.
Nice to meet you guys.
From where?
From the community services board, right behind the ground.
Wow. Yeah.
That's a big shift.
Yeah.
That's a big shift.
I was doing accounting there, too.
All right.
Okay, give, give us a, a couple of sentences about your interest and background and what you.
Okay, well, I'm a Virginia Tech graduate, and my bachelor's in accounting. Um, I started in banking and then moved to the community services board in Fredericksburg. Um, and then the one in Culpeper, um, kinda working my way up. My last position was accounting manager for the community services board. And I mean, I just wanna keep growing in my career in accounting and finance and, um.
And she came with munis experience.
Oh, wow, yes, that's right.
A little bit, we actually, um, when I worked for the community services board, I came to Orange County to view y'all's munis. Um, and that's, then we implemented it, so we're a little bit behind on, on implementation, but there are pieces that we had done that y'all hadn't and vice versa, so.
The fact that she could pronounce it and knew what it was.
I, I was gonna say, that's the nicer name for it, from what I understand, but.
You'll also be happy to know that Virginia Tech won the national championship last night, according to the Minneapolis paper. Am I making news here? I thought that would be the first thing you would say.
I didn't see that. I'll take it, though.
Yeah, no kidding.
Take it for the ball season, that's our, that's our sport.
Somebody needs to get a picture with Tony Bennett holding a, holding the.
I have, it, it's made it trip around the world a few times, but.
I did hear Charles Barkley say Virginia Tech instead of Texas Tech during the game.
Well, welcome, glad to have you.
Yes, thank you.
Plenty, there's plenty to do, so.
We'll, we'll keep you busy.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll keep you busy.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, VDOT quarterly report, Mr. Saunders, you're up again, or Jonathan, or both?
Good afternoon, Chairman White, members of the board.
Why, hello? Welcome back.
Here to go over your quarterly report. The, um, we're gonna hit on again, the CTP recommended that twenty and thirty-three, there's, they'll be given to them, they'll, they'll release it in June. Our project updates, six oh-three should, is going to be starting here at the completion of three and twenty, which is scheduled to be finished at the end of April. So, right after that, our crew's gonna move right over to six oh-three, finish that up. Um, once they finish with six oh-three, they'll be jumping to six oh-two, right after that, to do the first two miles of that.
That, which end is that going to be, do you know?
So, the six oh-two, it's, they're gonna start from the six eleven side and then.
I, I, I know that was on there first, man, the far end has gotten horrendous.
Are you doing that with your crews or is that contract or is what?
It's a combination.
Combination, okay.
Combination. Westwind Drive, once that's scheduled, they're gonna get to it. It's gonna happen. Um, the, the paving, that one should, is going to go to add here in the early summer, and we should be starting construction with that one in August. The, uh, the Battlefield Farms, Route six seventeen, six twenty-seven, seven oh-one.
You can do all, that all, all as one project?
Yes.
You can bid it, bid it, okay.
One project. So, our resurfacing schedule, I'll be providing Allison with a map. It's an interactive map, so you'll be able to follow the contractors when they, when they pave it, when it's scheduled, when it's coming up. I'll provide that with her tomorrow. Um, our traffic engineers, they have done the, the study, as we were talking earlier about the six fifteen rumble strips, and they recommended that one. Um, they've also did a, a study for Route six twenty-nine in the intersection of six thirty-one, about the visibility of that intersection, and they, they recommended a few things, and we'll be looking at our funds to get that addressed. The Route fifteen, right before we get into town of Gordonsville, the re, the re, the pavement markings, the tra, we're working right now with traffic engineering to get that scheduled for this year. Um, and then there are our area land use, the AK and K Boulevard. And then there are area land use, the A-K-N-K Boulevard, the developer was given a punch list to work on, as well as Twin Drive, developer was given a punch list on that one, too. And then Germana Drive and Fieldstone Drive, we just emailed those to Allison this week. So, she'll have the estimate there. That's all. Our crews have done six hundred and fifty-five work orders this fiscal year, and they're almost entirely all drainage. I guess that surprises you. They've been working hard, so we appreciate them. Are there any questions that you have for me this time?
On your rescheduling, your repaving schedule that you're going to be submitting, there's some confusion about Tower Road. Matter of fact, you and I had a text exchange the other day about some issues there that I haven't heard anymore, so I assume you found them and addressed them. That's a road that I think was partly resurfaced, and for some reason it didn't get finished. It would be helpful if we, if there's a situation like that where you're, if you're going to pick it up this year or redo the whole thing. I don't know what the plan is for Tower, but that's an example of one that's sort of been festering now for several years in terms of taking care of it. And so, I'd like to see some updated information, because I do get frequent calls on that, and especially when there are issues. And apparently, structurally, there's some real problems in certain segments of that road.
It has some weak foundation, pavement foundations. It helped the problem, but last year we did not re-mark the center line markings on that. We didn't include it in the contract. So, the chip seal contractor came through, and it wasn't listed as a line on it. We kept waiting for them to re-mark, 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 and it never happened. And then we got to where temperatures were too cold for us to do ourselves. So, it's on our list to re-mark ourselves this year. You'll see the paint truck coming through, our VDOT paint truck, coming through the county, remarking all of the first primary routes and then the secondaries, and six twenty-four is on there, Tower Road. The full length, all the way down to the southern end, six fifty-one.
Yeah, okay.
But we, right now, we've got two areas that I saw that was in the thirteen thousand block, thirteen thousand five hundred block. There are two large potholes where I think we're going to need to open the roadway up itself and get some drainage under the pavement. But then water is seeping up through it, and anything that we do on the top is going to fail. So, we're going to need to fix it instead of just topping it. But it does have some elements that need to be fixed on it.
Yeah.
It does. Remarking the center line will be a big improvement in itself, because it's dark out there at night.
Right, but that, hopefully that'll be after you've done all the other work.
Yeah, where we've got to patch it.
Right, okay.
Well, knowing us, it probably won't.
Go ahead, Mark.
That twenty-one miles of plant mix, is that... Describe what that's doing.
So, that's for our primaries? The... That doesn't touch secondaries at all, it's like...
Just on primary road?
Just on primary. The route list that... The route list that we sent with the last monthly update, that I did bring a copy of...
So, that's just resurfacing primary roads?
It is just resurfacing primary roads based on their surface condition.
And then the surface treatment is also on the primary roads?
Down secondary. Down secondary.
That's on secondary?
Just on secondaries.
Okay, right.
And we're shifting, you'll see, it's about ten percent to resurface with tar and gravel and a blotted seal. It's about ten percent of the cost in hot mixed asphalt. So, we just get so much more resurfacing per mile out of using the chip seal. It's not preferred, if our resurfacing budget was much higher, we'd hot mix asphalt everything. That's what we would prefer.
Just real quick, Alan, I know we've, this has been one of your harder days here with us, but every time I drive into Fredericksburg, it makes me appreciate the work that's been being done in this district by you and your crews, because cross over into Spotsylvania, and there's a creek that runs underneath six twenty-one. They put out a sign, well, they didn't even put out a sign for a while, they just let cars get torn up left and right. Then they came out and they tore up, what, about half the asphalt, Mr. White?
Yeah, something like that.
It is horrendous. It is just ungodly. I won't even drive that road now. I go all the way around twenty to Route three. So, it reminds me how much you all have done in this county and the difference from three or four years ago, so, thank you.
Thank you. We've got a great team. We do, our superintendents in Orange are incredible, so we're thankful for it.
The...
Great improvement.
Looks like you're almost finished with the three and twenty intersection. I see the flashing yellows up there.
We are, we're close. Now that the signal work is done, Jonathan has been really working on that project, coordinating with the Federal Highway Administration and our contractors, and is federal aid on that project. So, there's a different standard of care from an environmental and work perspective, so it's been a real priority of his.
Lot more paperwork.
Yeah, we're thankful to see that one done. It's close.
Yeah.
Soon as the grading's complete, that you'll see now, the next step is to pave it, to top it and mark it, but...
So, they'll finish grading, then we'll get the pavement in there right after the grading's done, and then we'll put the little bit of guardrail right there before the bridge, and then they'll open up the current traffic signals that are covered with the tar.
And you're going to close the intersection.
Oh, there's a pipe under there that's failed. We're going to replace it. And that will be the night of the fifteenth and the sixteenth of this month. And it'll be closed from eight PM to about five, eight AM.
Is that on twenty or on three? Which...
The intersection.
The actual intersection?
Yes.
The median portion.
Well, the, so the left turn from twenty, they'll have to go up to that turnaround to come back to go on the, or on three. Left turn going westbound on three, they'll have to go up to that turnaround, come back to go on twenty. From eight PM to five, eight.
So, it'll just be that one turn lane that's closed.
Yes, and then twenty won't be able to turn, because the...
Right.
Twenty will have to make, go into Spotsylvania turnaround.
And that's at night?
At night.
You're going to put a verbal message sign or something up there to tell, alert people that that's coming?
And I've talked to our, that we're going to be issuing like radio announcements and stuff.
Yeah.
And we always put it on our website.
The Smart Scale in Barbersville, I want to make sure I understand that, that is going to be the eastern intersection.
That's correct.
And it has been recommended by the Transportation Board?
It has been, it's in the recommended funding scenario.
Okay, and when will we, when will we get more information on that?
In June.
And what will that tell us?
That the project has been adopted into the six-year plan. So, we're going through the secondary six-year plan process now. Once the secondary six-year plans are adopted at the local level, they are combined with the improvement projects from Smart Scale, and the CTP will vote on the entire six-year collective plan in June. So, right now, out of the forty-four Smart Scale applications that were submitted in the Culpeper District for funding, there were four that were recommended based on their cost benefit score. The thirty-three, twenty roundabout on the east end of Barbersville was one of those four. So, it's in our Culpeper District recommended funding scenario that the Commonwealth Transportation Board will vote on in June.
Okay.
So, we're looking forward to June.
Okay. Any other questions, sir? Alan, thank you again.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Come back soon. We'll have them board. Okay. We have a consent agenda. Any questions on that, or is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. unanimous. New business. We have an MOU with the Orange County Public Schools. Ms. Stephanie.
The MOU for you is the MOU recommended to the Robin authority earlier this afternoon. This is for, to sign on behalf of the county.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. And we have the related lease agreement with the Orange County Public Schools for a tower site, I take it.
Yes, sir. This is the lease agreement crafted by myself and the county attorney in regards to the tower site located on this property above the school, Pindix A. Has a map for you of that site, and this is the lease agreement from the schools. It's a dollar a year, over fifty years, to lease the space for that tower.
My God, expensive.
We are responsible for electricity, maintenance, security. And as you recall, we've already worked out an agreement with the town for the access route to get to the site.
Okay, any further questions, Stephanie? Okay, have a motion, second?
Second.
And a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay. The Virginia Public Schools funding, do we have something in our package, or did you give us something new on that?
I had emailed out earlier today, but there is an item out in front of you all's seats with...
There it is. It's item five D.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Allison, you're going to, or Brian, you're going to...
Actually, with Glenda being ill, I'm going to pinch it for her. Stephanie and I worked on this today to get ourselves together, but we were advised recently by the county's bond council, T.W. Bruno with McGuire Woods, that there was potential refunding opportunity for the Orange County Public Schools, three series of bonds, two thousand, two thousand one, two thousand two. Essentially, what a refunding is in municipal finance, it's a refinancing that's getting a lower interest rate, better terms and conditions. The Virginia Public Schools Authority would be issuing, doing the sale. It'd be closing toward the end of May. The potential savings based on the terms left, interest rates and such for these three would be a total of a hundred and sixty-one thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars. That's an estimate. It won't known until the loan closes. Glenda had worked with Gary Honaker, the Chief Financial Officer for the county schools. The school board approved to having its chair sign the certificate of refunding of local school bonds at yesterday's meeting. We have provided a certificate that hasn't been completed as part of us being the issuers, meaning the board being the issuer. So, our recommendation is to authorize Chairman White to sign the completed certificate of refunding of local school bonds for the BPSA. We'll have that completed and in time for submission to BPSA by the April twelfth deadline.
Are the schools taking the lead on completing the certificate?
Stephanie is.
You are, okay, okay, good. All right. All right, any questions?
Since it's a barge of the obligation of the county, why do the schools have to apply to this?
I think because the school, I can double check, but my hunch is that the Virginia Public Schools Authority only allows the schools to access that financing and not the county.
Also, the school has to acknowledge that they only use the funds for those projects. It may be part of, and I agree, it's a little odd.
All right, I'm going to do it. You need an authorization now?
Yes, sir, I've...
So moved.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And unanimous, all right.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay. I see no old business. Excuse me, Department Director, Constitutional Officer reports. The next generation nine-one-one migration proposal. Dominique? This made for some interesting reading, I must say.
Gentlemen of the board, it's my pleasure to be here in front of you tonight to present to you our next generation nine-one-one proposal. With joining me this evening, I have Amy Ozeki and Steve Marsol from VITA, which is the Virginia Information Technology Agency. What we're looking at in the world of emergency communications is a transition from the way that nine-one-one services have typically been delivered to the PSAP's public safety answering points, which has been over copper lines or plaino telephone service. With the demand of the public increasing to need to receive high-speed delivery of services and data, the nine-one-one community recognized that we needed to move from our current delivery of nine-one-one calls to a more enhanced version of delivery of those services. So, we're transitioning now to what's being termed as next generation nine-one-one, which allows nine-one-one PSAPs to be able to receive SMS messaging to nine-one-one centers, delivery of data, media, to include photos, videos, and so forth. The mandate is for us to be compliant with that, with the technology to support that system by 2023. So, what the Virginia nine-one-one services board did was, upon issuing that mandate, the less contract with VITA had them come out and conduct an assessment of all of the PSAPs in the Commonwealth, to find out what type of equipment they currently have with regards to call handling equipment, GIS and mapping, voice recording services, data analytics. And based from that assessment, the nine-one-one services board is prepared to allot grant funds to support the upgrade of our current systems to support next generation nine-one-one technology. Over the last seven months, myself, my IT director, Larry Clement, and our new public safety GIS analyst, Jim Whip, have been attending work sessions with VITA, with AT&amp;T, who is the proposed service provider that I'm presenting to you today, to prepare Orange County to get ready to transition to next generation nine-one-one. In the packet that you received, you will notice that there's a couple of key elements to this. VITA, though Orange County already receives text and nine-one-one, our current equipment still isn't prepared to handle data and media and so forth. So, we're required to get some of our systems upgraded or, and/or replaced. The ESI net provider, which is the delivery method for next generation nine-one-one, that we're looking to go with into contract is AT&amp;T. AT&amp;T wrote a contract for the National Capital Area, which included Fairfax County, Virginia, to provide the contract services for that group. Upon that contract, it was determined by the Commonwealth, we could expand the same contract terms to all the PSAPs across Virginia. AT&amp;T was selected as the preferred provider because they have the current infrastructure in place to support the services that we would need. They have up to six data centers distributed nationally that could support the amount of data that we're expected to begin receiving into PSAPs from cellular devices that is the most common delivery method of phone calls in today's age. The nine-one-one services board funds that they are out, I'm sorry, that they provide, prepared to provide us through grant money covers the items listed in the chart that's in your packet, which totals two hundred and eighty-one thousand, forty-three dollars and ninety-four cents. That includes the upgrade or replacement of the equipment as listed in the chart, as well as two years of monthly expenses for the AT&amp;T contract from the time of deployment. What it means for Orange County and for your consideration is that beyond that twenty-four month, that initial twenty-four months, we will see a significant increase in our monthly nine-one-one phone service bills. The difference is approximately an increase of delta of thirty-eight hundred dollars a month.
And what, is that just because of data usage? Or what's the reason for the expansion? Or what, what's, what's the reason for the expanded?
Increase cost?
Cost, yeah.
Well, one of it is that the services are delivered through fiber, which is more expensive. Insight on that, I'm going to defer to some of my technical experts.
Actually, I think you did very well, actually. It actually, the copper that we use today is actually very cheap. It's been around since the seventies. So what we're talking about putting in is fiber, redundant or diverse fibers. So two different paths into your, and I understand your building, a new nine-one-one center. So putting it into that new building, and that just costs more. The main difference is the, the I P connectivity. It's about two or three, two to two and a half thousand dollars a month more, and that's really what the difference is. If you're stuck to do the same data work they do today, or what Verizon does for you today, A T and T will do that in the future, and that's really what the difference is. And we've been using this current nine-one network since the seventies.
I guess one of the questions that I had when I looked through this was the, the, the interface or the impact on our ongoing projects to build a new, new building. And of course, it'll have a, it'll have a fiber connection, you know, on its own. And just making sure that we understood how the, all of the new equipment that's associated with that impacts this or vice versa. I mean, is it, is this a, are these pieces that are completely outside the scope of what we're currently replacing with the consoles and all those kind of things? I mean, I, I couldn't tell where one project started and the other ended, and if there's any inner relationship at all. Sounds like there's not, but.
There is not, it's a completely separate project. This is, this is solely dealing with the delivery of nine-one-one services to citizens nationwide. So it, it doesn't have anything to do with our building or any of the equipment that we're getting to go into the building. This is, this is strictly the cost of what we would be paying monthly to Verizon now, who would be paying monthly to A and T, A T and T.
Think of it as like you're replacing your internet service provider. It doesn't change your computer at home, it just changes who provides service to.
Let me ask, you're saying you could get video service?
That's the future.
Now.
That's it, that's the near future.
I understand, but that's, does that, does that video go to the existing consoles? Or does it go?
It would go to our call handling equipment.
Okay, so basically, this is just a, an interface doc, equipment to take it from the, and, and input it into our existing consoles and control systems?
Your, your existing call handling equipment is all computer-based, so it can receive. The problem is right now, the link between that and the citizen is analog.
Okay, so.
So we don't have that ability to get it in.
So this just replaces the interface between the citizen and the consoles with digital?
Essentially.
So, so A T and T is going to capture the nine-one-one call and, and then route it to us? That's going to be their?
Regardless of who the citizen signs up with, whether it's with Verizon for landline or A T and T wireless, or Sprint, or whomever, we call those originating service providers, they'll pass the call to A T and T with the data. A T and T will be responsible to get it to the nine-one center where the call taker answers it on the call handling.
Let me ask one question. We keep talking about A T and T, there's a map attached to this.
Yes.
And it's showing Verizon.
So A T and T is the E S I net provider. They're the, they're the ones with the capability of capturing that data and routing it to the nine-one-one center. They're going to be contrasting likely with Verizon for the fiber connectivity.
That's correct. I mean, the map that you see is who provides service today. So Verizon currently does all of that area.
But it says Fredericksburg Winchester region to deploy July twenty twenty to December twenty twenty.
Correct.
Yes.
The reason we need to do that is each one of these different colors on your map are the current service areas for Verizon or, or Central.
Okay, so this map really doesn't mean a darn thing to us?
No, I was just, I provided the map just to show that our region is, is scheduled to deploy between July and December twenty.
The significance is the deployment window, because for a period of time.
We can take the names out of it, it's, it's nothing, okay, that's fine. That's all I needed.
So the, uh, full capability is supposed to be, when? Full capability of this, the N G D, N G nine-one-one?
We have to be compliant by July of twenty twenty-three.
So our current goal is to have it by December of twenty twenty-one, where we statewide deploy. But the nine-one services board, in recognizing nine-one as a local service, leaves the final decision to bodies like this to decide. So I can't stand before you and say, I'll guarantee we'll have it all done by then because ultimately it's a local decision when and how to deploy.
Okay. If we agree to this now, we'll start paying for it in twenty-four months?
Twenty-four months after it gets its, in fact, after it's deployed? After it goes operational?
Which should be.
Is going to be?
Anticipated July of twenty twenty-two, F Y twenty-three.
Okay.
That's when your twenty-four months would run out, would be in twenty twenty-two. So it would be fiscal twenty twenty-three when you would start paying the total cost. And I will mention, and Dominique may not know this, because it just happened, is the nine-one services board has asked us to look at some longer-term solution. The, the twenty-four months is a guarantee, but they have formed a funding committee, and B M L and Baker have both been asked to provide members to that committee to talk about how do we solve this longer term. We recognize some small communities like Orange are seeing a fifty percent, or in some cases, a three or fourfold increase in their costs. So we do recognize the impact of that. So there is a committee that's going to come back to the nine-one services board with their recommendation on a longer-term solution to, to this funding problem. We, we do recognize the burden that we're putting on the localities. But at some point, the real key is, we have to do this. The infrastructure that Verizon maintains today is going away no matter what we do. So we've got to get off of it and move on to a, a, a I P backbone sometime in the next couple of years. And that's why the twenty twenty-three date was put into code.
Okay, but then, i- i- in terms of the implementing this project, it'll all, if I'm hearing correctly, it'll all take place in the new building. We're not going to have to do anything that then gets redone or moved or replaced if I.
It depends on the timing, which is one of the reasons that I'm rather eager to move forward with the process. So once we, if you guys decide to approve A T and T as our service provider and accept this proposal, I have a May twenty-eighth deadline that I can submit our proposal acceptance letter to the nine-one services board. Their board meets and votes on approving the proposal acceptance letters that have been submitted on July eleventh. And within ninety days from us receiving that approval by the nine-one services board, we can enter into contract with A T and T, which then starts this whole process of getting our equipment replaced and so forth.
But is it, given the deadlines of, that, that you were providing, it, I mean, it sounds like we.
Six months here and then move everything.
Yeah, I mean, that, but it doesn't sound like that we actually, that that's a smart thing to do. We, we, we could meet your, certainly your, the, the later timeframe by doing everything focused on the new building.
So we can, we will absolutely, we've talked about, we will work with you. If it makes more sense, if it's going to be close enough, six months probably isn't worth it doing it. But if it's a year, we do think it's worth it. And we would go ahead and pay the cost to put the fiber into both locations. I mean, we would go ahead and, and do it here and then move it there. We need to get this done, so we are willing to invest.
And what's the driver to get it done again?
The technology's going away. We've been having more, there have been more issues with the current nine-one network in the last couple of years with, I mean, you may remember the derecho that took out nine-one to Northern Virginia, two million of, of population. But incidents like that, because the current landline network is not the, the primary network. And we all use cell phones now. So as a result, that infrastructure is aging. And so that's why we really see a push to, to making this happen. Plus, the issue for us with wanting to migrate you maybe in this building that moved you is we have to pay for both networks while we do the transition. And the significance of that map is, we really need everyone within that Fredericksburg Winchester region to go within the same six-month block, where it starts costing us a lot of money. Because during the transition, we pay for who moved, not who hasn't moved. So at some point, if Orange were the last locality in that block to not move, we'd be paying a lot of money to keep Orange on the old network. So it, in our economic interest, to go ahead and migrate you where you are temporarily and then move you. And, and that's, that's what the real issue is, is making sure that we're not maintaining two networks. So once people start to go in your region, we want to make sure everybody goes in the region. And that's why we have those time.
Is that the reasoning on the options? That proceeding under the Fairfax contract is highly recommended, rather than waiting to see what the Virginia Beach R F P is?
For, the, the board made that recommendation in January of last year, so fifteen, sixteen months ago now. And at that time, Virginia Beach said their R F P would be out last May. And it just came out in March, or no, it, it closed March first. And so it's still in review, and we don't know exactly when it will be awarded. We're hoping sometime in summer, but at this point, we don't see a reason to wait.
We did have an opportunity to hear a presentation directly from A T and T, which Mr. David was able to attend. And I feel comfortable with the support that they are able to provide as the provider and their capability to handle.
So somebody other than A T and T may take the Virginia Beach Norfolk area?
Possibly.
It is possible. There are national standards to ensure that next generation nine-one, just like an internet service provider, you don't have to worry about whether it's Comcast, it's internet, or Verizon, or internet is internet.
Okay, now, now, all the capital items are being paid for by VITA, correct?
By the nine-one services board.
Yes, okay. So the one thing that would be in your local budget would be the hundred and fifty thousand for your call handling equipment. You would pay that to the vendor, we would, we would reimburse you. But the diversity cost, the legacy cost, all of those other ones, A T and T costs, we would just pay directly to A T and T on your behalf, and you'd never even see the money.
I guess the, the, the one concern I'm hearing and have myself is that because we, we just happen to be in a transition, you know, not only of equipment, but also between locations, that we don't get, we don't, you know, find ourselves having to, having spent money to do one thing and have to spend it again, especially with local money to, because of the, the, the move, the fiscal move as well as the, the transitioning to some new equipment. So we need to, that has to be carefully considered as we, as we go forward.
That was one of the, one of the primary things for Dominique, establishing a communication line with the folks from VITA very early on, make them aware, one, that we're in the process of getting out of insufficient space and into it and not to strand our costs. And they've confirmed that they're willing to work with this. One, one other thing on the A T and T, I did have the benefit of going to this meeting, and certainly a lot of acronyms that were way above my, my, my understanding. But I did follow this, that the Fairfax contract and A T and T services underneath, that certainly meets our needs as a, as a kind of a county environment, not an urban environment, that type of thing. And that generally, everybody else that are peer communities in this area are going to go with the Fairfax contract.
So to date, twenty-three localities of P S apps in the state of Virginia have already accepted their proposals from VITA. And fifteen of them are under contract right now. It's my understanding that Madison and Call Pepper are close to signing their proposal acceptance as well. The closest P S app to us that is already under contract to deploy the A T and T is Orange and Falkia.
When we say that we're a part of this, uh, uh, group here on the map, if we elected not to do it and go somewhere else, or go and wait, would we not be in that group? Would there be some other, I mean, in this group, other than what you're trying to do as a, as a region? Or is it, there's some specific, specific reason for that boundary?
The block is the block regardless of who you select. So if you were to wait for the Virginia Beach, we still need you to go on that same six-month block. That block is the Verizon service area today. They have two things they call selective routers that route your nine-one-one calls today. They want to be able to decommission those to get rid of that legacy cost. Until everyone is off, they can't decommission, and we continue to pay the tab. And, and that is a cost the nine-one board has signed up, or we will pay the cost of the old network after you transition.
Are you representing the nine-one-one board?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I was just making sure you wasn't representing A T and T.
Oh, God, no, I'm sorry. And I will say, we, we absolutely will work with you on the, on the moving issue. But I will say this as well, one of the cornerstones of the nine-one services board, and, and I was originally from Prince William County, I was a nine-one center manager for eleven years. In fact, the last time I was in this room was when with then Lieutenant Governor Tim Kane recognizing, uh, Orange County was the first to deploy wireless phase two in the Commonwealth of Virginia. And we had gotten him out here to recognize that, and I still have pictures somewhere of that. But, um, uh, so my heart is with local government. And one of the guiding forces of the nine-one services board, which by the way, sixteen members, eight are local government, fire chiefs, police chiefs, finance officers and so forth, is we support you. This is your money, not ours. And as a result, you can change your mind. If this Virginia Beach procurement went some way in some way we're not expecting, and there was some better provider for you, it's like changing an internet service provider. You could say, I've changed my mind, we want to go a different direction.
But, but what would the difference be in our costs? Is something, something with regard to that thirty-eight hundred, less than that?
No, there would be no cost, unless you've already deployed A T and T. Those costs that are incurred by the deployment are all covered by the board.
Okay, so.
Your equipment, once it's upgraded, those upgrades need to be done regardless of who the service provider is. Your G I S data that you have to do is the same regardless of your service provider. In fact, what we believe is even your diversity would be the same. Because at the end of the day, you only have limited broadband choices. So therefore, A T and T is going to go to the same people that Motorola would go to, that Sacon would go to, that General Damage would go. They all go to the same people for that last mile. So as a result, pretty much everything you'll do getting that new building ready is going to need to be for whoever you, you choose.
Okay, I, I mean, I'm thinking I've got this. The, the capital costs are going to be, no matter what happens. The, uh, VITA is going to handle that. Alright, so the, with the A T and T project, we're going to spend thirty-eight hundred dollars a month more two years after we start this.
Correct.
The option of looking at something with a Virginia Beach contract is we might get something less than that thirty-eight hundred dollar increase.
Or we might get more.
Or maybe.
Or we might get more. But I'm saying, but what I'm looking at is, what do we have at risk? And it's just that thirty-eight hundred a month, more or less?
Yeah.
The only barrier is twenty-four months.
Well, and the other risk too, sir, is that the E S I net provider that they choose may not meet all of the I three standards. So there's a, there's a risk there.
We wouldn't fund it with the dozen.
So, so the only, the only difference would, would be, that's the thirty-eight hundred plus or minus is, is what we're looking at here.
One of the other things that came on the presentation from the A T and T is that they've already done this in some large metropolitan areas. I mean, like the Seattle's of the world, and some NFL city-type metros for this E S I net service. So this is already, this is not a, this is not a startup type of process.
In fact, they, they got the contract for the entire state of North Carolina, they got Tennessee, and they've got several jurisdictions in Maryland. All of Northern Virginia has signed with them, and several jurisdictions in Maryland have as well. So we do think it is a safe choice. And I, I don't want to malign what Virginia Beach may do, because they may have a perfectly acceptable second choice. We have pulled the solutions providers out there to look at their cost models, and some are a little different. Some charge a flat rate per population, some do what the connectivity cost is, plus the flat rate per population. And what we found is some will benefit small localities, because their flat rates, or take a, the extreme example, Highland with twenty-four hundred, twenty-five hundred population. If it's fifteen cents a person, they're paying next to nothing, that's probably the best solution for them. But another solution like the A T and T solution has a, they do the connectivity, and which is about two thousand dollars then, plus a smaller per population cost. Well, for, for Highland County, two thousand dollars, that's a dollar a person. So you just went from fifteen cents a person to a dollar a person. So it really depends on how they structure the contracts. And we have no earthly idea of what's going to happen in Virginia Beach. I have two staff that are on the selection committee, non-voting members, but they are sworn to secrecy. So we'll know once it over, what had happened, but until then.
So what is our timeline for having to make a decision?
It's, it's a bit of. It's, it's a bit of, we, we need to move forward. Um, I would like to meet the May twenty-eighth deadline to submit our proposal acceptance. But there is a rolling application process. So if you aren't ready to make a decision on this by May twenty-eighth, we would have another opportunity.
Can you just bring it back to us at, next meeting or whatever?
Yeah.
I'm not sure what more we'll learn.
Exactly. I mean, but it's for our information and discussion, I. Well, and, and part of, part of that may have been some miscommunication apart with Dominique. I, I would recommend, gentlemen, that you would authorize me to sign the, uh, proposal acceptance letter, and that way we can give the proof.
Second.
Any further discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, uh, county attorney's report?
No report, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, county administrator's report?
Uh, noted no report.
Thank you. Board comment?
I'm astound, astounded.
You weren't ready, we got.
Yes, exactly.
Did you have a board?
Uh, no, no. Actually, I, I do, no, I'll cover it later.
No, he does not know.
Just room for a total loop there.
Anyone else on board?
Yeah, I got something.
Okay.
Have you all got your, uh, your putters?
Oh, no.
I have not gotten one yet.
I never made it back to the house.
Okay, all right, we got two of us in, yeah.
No, but.
Twenty dollars. The disc golf course.
Yeah, okay. All right, that's mine.
Did, uh, I do have a comment. We, the county sponsored the first Tuesday coffee this morning at the airport. Phenomenal turnout.
Yeah.
And, um, a lot of good information, but the, uh, airport was well utilized.
That was a good investment, I don't know how long ago, but it was a good investment.
Would have been better if it had a second store.
We had quite the Orange County commercial for those over there.
Yeah.
Would have.
Any other board comment?
Uh, just congratulations to the University of Virginia, not Virginia Tech, for having won the national championship.
I'll say, what a, I got a text from, from a friend who was there, and he said, holy mackerel, there is a Santa Claus. And I, I, I couldn't think of a better way of describing what happened. It was, it was pretty amazing. Okay, any questions on the information items?
Mr. White, I did have one more thing that I completely forgot about.
Okay.
Uh, the Fire Chiefs Association held their elections the other night. Um, Jeff Madonka is the new president of the Chiefs Association, and, uh, he's already reached out to me and plans on being very proactive to, uh, move the Fire Chiefs Association in the right direction, uh, to, uh, work with us a little bit better.
Okay. Okay.
Um, in your packet, there is a letter from FEMA, and that was addressed to me, and, and I think, uh, did I see that in the, in the packet?
It is proving that answer in negotiation.
And, and I guess the only question I had is it involves, uh, two of the lakes, flood planes, two of the lakes, uh, in the, uh, Lake of the Woods area, plus Lake Orange. Anybody have any comment or concern about their, I, I, it, it, what I was given does not tell me, uh, what the impact is, it just says that there's a, you know, they're going to use a different level to calculate the flood insurance, uh, but I have no way of knowing whether that's a, a big deal or not. Does anybody, does anybody follow that enough?
What happened is when, uh, when FEMA originally came out with those flood planes, they, uh, they used some broad, uh, uh, broad measure, and, uh, I think they are accepting the, uh, all the work that the, that the Lake of the Woods has done with regard to their dam engineers that have done a far more detailed analysis of what, uh, of what flood is. I mean, they had, they had, uh, areas in there that would, uh, they said would flood, would be long after the dam fell, you know, I mean, the dam was gone, I mean, it was just, uh, so they have been working with the, with the FEMA to get the, get that part of the map redone, inconsistent with what the, the dam research, dam engineers have been doing for a damn long time.
Well, I, I got an email.
Somebody was here recently talking to us about, about this.
Right, yeah, well, and, and Patrick, well, has been involved with it, but I, I got an email today with, with the reason I raised it, and it says, I'll give you a couple of pieces of information. Lake Orange, the still water elevation is now three hundred and eighty-eight point six feet. Well, does that mean anything to anybody? How about this one? The Lake of the Woods is, uh, still water elevation is now three hundred and twenty point five.
That does mean something.
And, and Keaton Lake is three eighty-seven point six.
That's the feet above, above sea level, and so.
That's feet above sea level, and that's generally, generally the spill, spillway heights.
Okay.
Which is less than what FEMA had originally calculated that.
Well, it, this, this email that I received today says that we're going to be getting, uh, flood insurance rate maps.
Yes.
Soon.
The hazard mitigation plan was the one that Chief Morton came, and it's the all hazards. What you received, and I did, uh, Mr. White, if you would afford that to me, I'd appreciate.
Would you afford it to me, too?
And, um, that's the, the flood insurance rate map process that we went through, that Lake of the Woods challenged, and produced their own data.
Okay. I, as I looked at this, uh, this letter, come back from the, these checklists on, on the, uh, on the following pages, I don't have the faintest idea what they mean. Does it mean the checklist are items that are good or bad? Are the unchecked ones other, are things to be done? I'm not sure what it means.
Yeah. All right, well, I, I sent you guys this copy of this email that came in today. I mean, it, it didn't seem to be calling for us to take any action, or make any comments, or do anything, it was more of an alert than anything else.
Well, it says recommendations for improvement in the, uh, in the plan, and I'm not sure which ones are the ones, the ones that are checked, or the ones are checked.
I think the ones that are, are checked, in that they consider these recommendations to further strengthen your plan during the next update.
All right, okay. All right.
All right.
That's five years.
I just, I just saw, I just, I just saw approved, and then.
Forgot about it.
Just moved on.
Okay. Any appointments to boards and commissions?
Yeah, I would like to recommend Jim Crozier for appointment to the Rapid and Service Authority.
Aye.
And I would like to nominate John Frye to serve a new term on the library board.
Uh, and I have a question. Uh, one of my constituents is the, currently serving on the, uh, the library board, but it's a rotating, uh, position, right now that's in, uh, in District Five. And does anybody else want to move that, or have somebody to, to take that and rotate that to another district? Because it rotates to District Four now, is my understanding of how it's set this up.
In that case, I will withdraw my nomination of Mr. Frye, and, you know, I, I would like to see us, um, stay right where it's at.
I mean, Mr. Landry wants to continue to serve.
Sounds, sounds like a solution.
Okay, fine.
So you're nominating?
That's the nomination.
All right.
So basically, Mr. Crozier.
Skated.
Uh, I, I, I'm not thinking what the term is, but he, he gave his proxy for this to, uh, to Mr., uh, to, to District Five. So it's a downward rotation instead of an upward? Doesn't go back to one again?
I, I think it's, it's a holographic, I think it's five, 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 five.
So District Five.
Because I, we have a, there is a District Five rep on there, but, fine, I'll, I'll represent, uh, recommend that, uh, Mr. Landry serve on another, another term. Well, I didn't mean twist your arm.
All right. All right, any others? Okay, all in favor of those nominations?
The, uh.
Sorry, go ahead.
I'm assuming that Mr. Chilusta wants to serve, continue to serve.
Um, I reached out to Brenda Hutchinson and confirmed that he was eligible for reappointment, because sometimes there's a maximum. Um, he is eligible, she suggested that we contact him if we wanted to know if he was interested.
He is not.
He is, okay.
He is not.
Okay.
Next. He, he, he announced that at our last meeting.
Okay. Then we will wait a while on that.
Okay, any others? All right, all in favor of these appointments, say aye.
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 All right. Uh, let's see, calendar items, we have a, scheduling a public hearing, and two public hearings, one for rezoning and one for an SUP. Is that okay with everybody?
The planning commission did recommend, um.
Yeah, they did take action.
Mm-hmm, approval.
All right, I see that, yeah.
And, uh, Mr. David, thank you for your update from the planning commission, it was very nice to have.
Yes, that does, that doesn't get closed always, so.
Yes, sir. Uh, Ms. Newman, who's helping out, that was her first caller.
All right, so we have a agreement on the scheduling of these two public hearings? So moved. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, closed meeting.
All right. Ready? Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Orange County desires to discuss in closed meeting the following matters: Discussion consideration of the assignment performance of a specific employee of the public body; Consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by the public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel with respect to wilderness shores and employment law issue. And whereas pursuant to Section 2.23711A1 and AA to the Code of Virginia, such discussions may occur in closed meeting, now therefore be resolved that a Board of Supervisors of Orange County that is hereby authorized discussion of four state matters in closed meeting need that as a motion.
So moved. Okay, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
From closed.
Members of the Board, to the best of your knowledge, were the only matters discussed in the closed meeting, public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and that only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meetings. Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Crozier?
Aye.
Mr. Frain?
Aye.
Mr. Goodwin?
Aye.
And Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
I'm zero.
All right. My atomic clock tells me it's seven o'clock, so it's time for public comment. Do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
No, sir, not for public comment.
Okay, we'll close the public comment period. All right, we have four public hearings tonight. First one is proposed lease with Four County Players Incorporated. Mr. David, are you taking the lead on this one, or?
Yes, um, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, as you were aware, back in February, I believe it was, or January, brought to use plans by the Four County Players, which leases the, uh, the, uh, the community building there in Barbersville to, for an expansion project. As part of that expansion project, you all had get, seen supplementary plans and gave, uh, your, uh, initial approval, uh, to those plans. Well, as part of that process, um, because this, uh, uh, project is going, um, outside of the existing footprint, um, it was advisable, we have to talk with Mr., uh, Mr. Johnson, uh, I blank it out there, that we ought to, uh, go ahead and update the lease to reflect the new exhibit. So what I had in the agenda package, there are, uh, some minor edits to the, uh, uh, the lease that's out in front of your seat tonight, uh, from the exhibit, the lease attendant we had in your agenda package. So what this lease essentially does is it allows the project to go forward, uh, it, it recognizes, uh, the le, uh, the easement that the Barbersville Ruin Town has around the rear of the building, certainly delineates that on the easement, and it also, um, holds forth that the Four County Players cannot obstruct access of the Barbersville Ruin Town to get to their, their lease, uh, property, and particularly a storage building behind their building. Other than that, Carl Schwanner, representing Four County Players, is here tonight if you have any questions. I also speak to the, uh, Barbersville lease when we have that public address.
Well, the, the, you know, this is still showing incorrect information, because it's, you know, the, the, the blue, the blue, uh, ingress with a little turnaround doesn't exist anymore.
Um.
And, and so this, this orange easement would, you know, it's not, you need to be careful about, if, if, if this is going to be what we actually base things on, um.
This I have out in front of your seats that I sent out on Friday.
It's the same one. Oh. Okay. Well, again, it's still showing the little hook there, which I don't think really probably works. I'm not sure, but I think it goes across some lawn there, and maybe over a sidewalk.
Instead of going straight.
It probably should just go straight.
Yes, sir, I can make that.
Okay, but I'm not positive, but I think that would be correct.
Yeah, that, that, I can make that edit to the final, final one. I missed that on the.
Where, where did this get sent to? This was emailed?
Yeah, I emailed it on Friday.
Okay.
And then, um, and I provided Carl and Debbie Owen, and also, uh, Mr. and Ms. Rob, Mr. Robertson got a copy of the same. I think the edits to, to the exhibits reflected everything that you can imagine.
Oh, here we go, okay.
So the motion would just be to, to approve it with the change in the exhibit? Yes, sir.
Okay, so that's.
That, that was just.
That was, I just wanted to note that before we went any further.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. David? All right, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone signed up to speak?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Close the public hearing. Okay.
I'm if we approve.
With the change to the exhibit. Yeah. Taking the hook out, making.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Public hearing number two, proposed lease with Barbersville Ruin Town Club.
Yes, sir. The Chairman, members of the board, uh, in working through the prior lease with Four County Players and with, uh, Mr. Neil Robertson with the Barbersville Ruin Town Club, um, wanted, in working with Mr. Johnson, felt it was an opportunity, since we were updating the exhibit, uh, to also, uh, extend the lease from, uh, its termination in twenty twenty-three?
Four.
Four, thank you. Uh, to coincide with the, uh, Four County Players lease, uh, term, which is to twenty thirty-seven. So what you have before you today really is the same lease that was approved in two thousand and nine, except now this term goes to twenty thirty-seven. We made a couple other little minor, uh, edits, uh, that didn't affect the terms or conditions in that lease. The exhibit, um, shows everything that was on the Four County Players. I will make the correction on the, on the, uh, the hook and make that a straight out to the parking lot. But other than that, everything is in order, and Mr. Robertson has reviewed and approved this.
Okay.
And is available for any questions.
Any other questions, Mr. David? All right. Open the public hearing. Anyone signed up to speak for this public hearing?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Close the public hearing. All right.
Move if we approve.
Aye. Further discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? Okay, public hearing number three, rezoning nineteen oh one, uh, application made by the board for, uh, zoning map amendments on four different parcels, three in Unionville and one in Mine Run.
Yes, sir.
These are parcels that are, uh, either split zoned, or, or have a legacy zoning that no longer reflects their use. that no longer reflects their use, so.
Mr. Chairman, you, uh, all as a board initiated this rezoning, similar to a similar action about a year ago, I guess it was, to some other properties in Mine Run, you initiated this in March twelfth. Um, public hearing was held by the Planning Commission last Thursday. They voted unanimously to recommend, uh, approval of these corrective zoning actions. And so, uh, management for you tonight for action after the public hearing.
Okay, any questions anybody has before we open the public hearing? Open the public hearing, anyone signed up to speak?
Um, no, sir, Mr. Chairman, we don't have anyone signed up to speak. But I do want to let you know that, um, the Tunings, Ernie and Wendy have submitted, um, written support for this rezoning request.
Okay, and I also have, uh, received, uh, a phone call, uh, support from, uh, the, the Dunkins and, uh, Mrs. Wright and Mrs. Wright, those two separate properties, as well as a discussion with the Tunings. Okay, close the public hearing.
Good. Approved.
Okay, have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 She knows.
Okay, public hearing number four is a, uh, text amendment to the subdivision ordinance.
You want me to take this one?
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, there was some question from the Planning Commission. We, uh, with respect to private roads, they have the ability to approve certain kinds of private roads. And they were somewhat confused as to their authority and the basis for their authority. So what I did was redraft the private road language a little bit. I moved public roads to higher standing, because we say that's what we prefer. And I added some, some, uh, basis for their granting of private roads, legal authority, and, and how they can determine whether a private road is appropriate. So really, this is, I, I believe this was the law before, but this was designed to sort of clarify the language and, and take any ambiguity out, or any questions anybody might have as to how private roads work.
Planning Commission had their public hearing, um, no one appeared, and Planning Commission voted, uh, recommended approval unanimously.
Okay. Any other questions, county attorney, Mr. David? All right, open the public hearing, anyone signed up to speak?
No, sir.
Okay, close the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
I, I'd just like to thank the, the speakers tonight for being very.
Very quick.
Professional and quick.
Eloquent.
I, I didn't have to set my clock tonight, it, it didn't ding once. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Amazing.
I need one more motion.
No further business. Second.
Four public hearings can top, taken in less than ten minutes. Well, actually, I'm disappointed, I'd say it would be done in seven oh eight.